To call this meeting of the Cartersville City Council to order, we'll start with an invocation by Councilwoman McDaniel, followed by the pledge by Councilwoman Hodge. If you'll please stand with me.
If it's all free tonight, and we're going to do it silently, let us pray. Amen?
Amen.
Please rise in the pledge.
Pledge of the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Keel in the roll, please.
Carrie Hodge, Ward 1, here. Jay Step, Ward 2. Louis Tunsmaier, Ward 3.
Here.
Lindsey McDaniel, Ward 4. Diane Tate, Ward 5, here. Lori Prout, Ward 6, here.
Lindsey is here.
Yeah.
I also think he was channeling Jackie Beebers for the length of that prayer, too. So, better words never spoken, Lindsey.
I thought that was just shake things up.
Very good.
It did.
That was perfect. We have the business of approving the council meeting minutes from our May 5 meeting. Councils have these well in advance of tonight. Chair will entertain any additions, corrections, edits, or motions that they see fit.
Mayor didn't see any corrections or additions, make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And the minutes are approved. We have a second reading for our urban redevelopment plan. Mr. Menino.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, as you know, this is the second reading. There have been no additions or changes to the plans since the first reading. As you're aware, back in September, we adopted our redevelopment plan, redifferent areas included in it. In the northwest industrial area of Almond Green.
Thank you.
There we go. In the northwest industrial area of Almond Green, we had a request to add a single parcel, former Goodyear plant, to that particular area. And that will allow us to also include it in the opportunity zone that was approved in that particular area. With that, we do recommend your approval of this amendment. And additionally, there is a resolution to go along with the plan.
Okay. So, any motions after we have our public hearing would need to be approved, the resolution?
Is correct.
Okay. Any questions for Randy at this point? Thank you, sir. I'll now open up a public hearing for comment on the urban redevelopment plan. Anybody wishing to step forward and speak either for or against may do so at this time. And seeing none, I will close the public hearing concerning the urban redevelopment plan. And as Randy just had mentioned, there is a resolution that coincides with this, so there can either be further discussion or a motion regarding that resolution made.
Off the motion to approve the resolution adopting the urban redevelopment plan.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And motion passes. We have another resolution.
This is a resolution for council in support of rehabilitation of 96 apartments for low-income located at Edelman Village Apartments on Old Mill Road.
Okay. Any discussion on this item? I want to step forward, sir. And for our clerk, if you'll please state your name and your address, please.
Good evening. My name is Breck Keen, I'm in Atlanta, Georgia. And I'm with Paces Foundation, and thank you, Mayor and council, for the opportunity to speak briefly to you. The Paces Foundation is a nonprofit affordable housing developer in order in Atlanta. They're one of the oldest and during the last economic downturn, one of the last affordable housing developers, nonprofit affordable housing developers in the state. Edelman Village was our very first community, built here in part as of 1995-96. It has been through its first 15-year compliance term at the Department of Community Affairs under the Urban Housing Tax Credit Program. We are here tonight asking your resolution of support to be an accompanying document to our application to DCA to do on the 23rd. As you're probably aware, the application cycle of DCA funding is highly competitive. The resolutions of support from local municipality allows us to compete for every point that is available to us. We are proposing a $4 million rehabilitation of that old village. A little over $40,000 per unit will be spent there. Property will receive a complete, top to bottom, inside out renovation, new roofs, new siding, amenity upgrades, including twenty pools, all-new interior unit upgrades, cabinets for my house, camp, working equipment, via random department community. And we need that to compete effectively in this market. There are a lot of apartments built in the Old Mill area that has impacted our operations. The economy obviously hasn't helped either, but it's time for the property to be rehabilitated. And we seek your support and resolution to accompany our application.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Keen?
With this group of low-rent housing, would it more or less be managed through what we have here now? The Federal Housing Authority, low-rent housing, would that be separate from them? I guess what I'm trying to get at.
Yes, sir. It has always been separate. This is project financed through the Housing Tax Credit Program, is not affiliated with other associated programs or resident or attendant subsidy programs. It allows, the property will maintain affordability for low and very low-income families. But it's income qualifications that residents must qualify for to obtain residency. Of course, we accept residents who come to our adorable vouchers, can't turn them away. They must be qualified on other terms.
I have a question.
So, this is the housing program that maintains the affordability of that old village for another 15 years?
Question. Do you have enough empty apartments if people are displaced when their apartment is being redone? Are you going to have to move people around? What is your plan?
Yes, ma'am. Right now, we unfortunately do have enough empty apartments. But it will be an in-place recap. There will be enough vacated units. Hopefully, we can do it at one to two buildings at a time that can be vacated. Those units will be renovated, and people move around within the complex. DCA requires us to have a relocation plan, a relocation budget, so any relocation expenses will be responsibility of the owner.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Just one additional question. Is the program for rehabilitation dependent upon the approval of the DCA application? Is that what will drive the program to move forward?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
Okay.
It is. Application's due June 23rd, to make announcements sometime before Thanksgiving.
Okay.
As I said, it's a very competitive program. Last year, it was overscheduled, 3 to 1.
3 to 1. Okay. Thank you.
But the preservation, which Edelman Village is, preserve the existing four blocks of stock is a preference this year.
That's good news.
Yes, it is.
Well, we appreciate you coming up and speaking to that. Appreciate the potential investment as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, chair will entertain a motion.
Off the motion to approve the resolution of support.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have a, yes, Chief McCann, if you'll come on up and tell us about this grant.
Mayor, council, the police department is requesting your authorization to apply for a grant from the US Department of Justice, Secure Our School Program. The grant will be used to pay for half the salary of the two officers that we have assigned to the school system. It's approximately $51,000. The match part will be paid with their salary, which we're already paying the full salary. We have had this similar grant in the past, but it's expired, so there will be no cost to the city.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Chair will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item's a discussion item regarding the PT Solutions Duathlon that was held, was April the 14th?
17.
17. I'll stay with the 14th, so I can say I was right. No, April, April the 17th. Go right ahead, Greg.
Yes, sir, Mayor and council. As you mentioned, we did host the, Dillinger Park hosted the duathlon sponsored by PT Solutions. At the park, there were over 300 and, no glasses on, 380 registered participants from the park's concern. It was a very well-run event, very received by the participants and the patrons of the race. However, we did have complaints. We had complaints on loud music, or I had one complaint on loud music, and there was a letter to the editor about that. Then we had some complaints on some intersections being closed. PT Solutions, Dr. Yake, Dr. Dale Yake is here, he will be speaking to you later. But we met with him, with the captain of pregnant from the police department, Parks and Rec Department, discussed what problems that we had had, and tried to come up with some solutions on those. And again, from the park's concern, we had a lot of out-of-town people that visited our park, visited our city, and they left with a very positive impact on our city. But because it does impact our community and our citizens, this is something I wanted to bring before council to get, you know, to get your thoughts on it. But I will bring up Dr. Yake. Now let him speak to y'all. He'll answer any questions that y'all may have.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Also, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your support that day, being a volunteer at the race. My name's Dale Yake, I live in Dallas, Georgia. I've owned a physical therapy practice here in the city of Cartersville for going on 19 years now. Currently have two practices, one over on Henderson Drive, one inside of the Harbin Clinic. So, we are part of this community, and we get to hear back from our citizens just as much as probably some of you do. As was mentioned, we did have, from the race participants, they viewed the city of Cartersville and the surrounding area with great praise. Beautiful community. Obviously, we thought it was a well-run event, they thought so as well. There were a few logistical issues that came up, obviously, in any new race, and we sat down with police and Dillinger Park, and feel like going for 2012, that we can work some of those issues out and make it a little bit less of an impact on the community, those that we impacted. I personally had only one negative comment from an area citizen because of the day of the race, obviously, being on a Sunday and being Palm Sunday. Looking at 2012, we're looking at a Sunday event as well because of the guidance from the police department and traffic and traffic control reasons. But that date is Sunday, August 15, 2012, which by the way, is a week after the Easter holiday. So, probably be a little bit less of an impact.
You mean April 15th?
April, I'm sorry, April 15th of next year. So, yeah, it's not an August Easter holiday. So, I'd be willing to answer your questions, answer any logistical issues that we may have and things that we look to change going forward. But we hope that you'll view this. We brought a number of participants from around the community, as far away as Tennessee. Most of the participants were from outside the community. We did have 30 registered participants from here in Cartersville. We had over 150 volunteers from the local community that also helped us out on that day. So, we think it made a nice impact to the community for both room stays at the area hotels, visiting restaurants after and before the event on Saturday. A number of participants had to come in on Saturday to pick up their packet. They stayed that night, they ate here, they stayed in the community. Many also visited the museums on Sunday after the event as well. So, there were a lot of positive comments from that. We hope the event will grow. From that 380, we anticipate next year it should approach 600. So, I'll be open to your questions.
What are the solutions that you've discussed about the logistics about which the work complains?
We had, the major issue was on Pine Grove itself because of the Dillinger Park being there. And for the safety of the athletes, obviously, on bikes, bikes and cars don't go well together. So, with an extreme precaution, we and the police department felt that if we could shut that road down temporarily, and that obviously led to some backup before church. And so, one of the ways to limit that impact is to not shut the turning lane down next year, and also to move the event up, the start of the event from 8 o'clock to 7:30 in the morning. And that pretty much takes most of the people off the race course by 9:45, which then, for church reasons, for the majority block of church, would limit that impact on the area of churches. So, those couple of things will make a huge impact, we think. The other complaint was music, that can be limited. Obviously, we had some novice folks doing this for the first time with the music, and we think we can deaden that sound down. There's some noise because we have to get announcements to participants to make them safe, know what they're getting themselves into that day, but I think we can knock the noise down as well. So, for the impact on the churches, I think we'll lessen it by that 30-minute window earlier. We think that with the police help and being a second year of an event and what to expect, and not turning that, shutting that turn lane down and keeping one lane of Pine Grove open, I think we limit the impact on the area churches next to Dillinger.
Other questions or comments?
And just to confirm, you're certain that next year will not be around Palm Sunday, Easter Sunday?
No, ma'am. It's my belief, at least when I looked it up this afternoon, that Easter is the weekend before April 15, 2012, and so we would limit that, obviously, impact.
Well, I'd like to say for the, you know, certainly, anytime you have an event that size, you're going to have some challenges, especially the first year. I know personally, living in that area and being on Pine Grove that day, yeah, there were a couple of challenges. But, you know, we did, I know that I received a call, maybe two calls at my house from the Connect CTY. I know that the police department put signage at the end of Pine Grove Road that day. And while it's always impossible to get, and I don't know what other efforts were made, I'm assuming he's reached out to the churches and may have to double those efforts next year to at least make sure everybody knows what's going on. But, you know, I think, I think a lot of due diligence was done on the front end, and while we did get some complaints, I think, I think it's something that can be hammered out, and I think these are the types of events we want to have in our city.
I agree. I hope one day to be able to run in a duathlon. I don't see that next year.
We can help you train to do that.
That'd be awesome.
Come on up there.
Yes, sir. You got to have the want-to.
That's right.
You know, I appreciate the effort in putting this together. I know that the money that was, there was money that was given to charity as a result of that, and I feel confident and comfortable that you're going to work with Greg and the public safety folks to, and those churches that were affected this year, to make sure that everybody's on the same page, and make sure that next year's event will be even better and even better organized.
Let me say this, you know, we do do this down in Acworth. This is, this will be our seventh year, this summer down in Acworth. You know, the same issues come, as the community becomes more aware of it, and on our part, we need to get the word out better. But the police here for the first year did an excellent job that day, given the, sitting down the traffic and all the planning that went into this from a police standpoint did help a lot. Now, for a first-year event, surely, I think it went pretty well.
And these events are typically held on Sundays?
You know, it depends on the city or the area. We felt like because of the traffic on 41 and because of the traffic in the city, that a Sunday would be, from a police perspective, was just going to provide less trouble. We thought that the traffic at that time on Sunday morning is the best window of time to put those bikes out on the road and not have that heavy, heavy traffic like you would on a Saturday morning, going to Ballfields or whatever else, shopping and those type things.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
My only comment is, I have not heard any complaints, other than one complaint about noise. And my ward is on the north side of town, so I did not hear as much. So, I probably can't make a lot of comments about people who were actually on the ground that day, but it seems like the only comment was about noise. So, I think if you think, you know, that's considered and taken into account, and you've changed the weekend so it's not a popular, you know, church-going weekend, which is one of our Palm Sunday and Easter Sunday are very popular, and you've changed the time. So, you've made some wonderful steps in the right direction and make this something that works for the community and for all the athletes and for the residents as well.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yeah, thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments. We good? All right. Greg, you got the next item as well. Before you do that, I want you to introduce your guest here tonight. We've got out-of-town royalty in the house.
Yes, sir, Mayor and council. My name is George Michael Odenlaw, Reverend Rudolph Dixon. He's a, he's mayor pro tem from the city of Harlem, Georgia, who is the home of Laurel, birthplace of Laurel Harley. They have, they have a large festival also over weekend, so anyway, he's going to stay with us this week and have him here.
Good to have you with us, sir.
It's a privilege and a pleasure, Chair. The tricky part is, I'm not in the house, save my jaw.
[Laughter].
Go ahead, Greg.
Yes, Mayor and council.
It's the Senior Aquatic Center door openers.
Yeah. Greg, inside the podium, I'm calling. Mayor and council, this, when we first built the Senior Aquatic Center, one of the things that we, that we cut out was the automatic door openers, well, for lack of funding. But we have budgeted that this year. I have spoken, tried to get local bids for this from two of the local door companies here. Did one of them deal in these type of door, and both of them recommended the Overhead Door of Atlanta. I got a price from them, I didn't get a price, or couldn't get, I didn't get a price from any other, any other contractors. But this is a budgeted item, and I'm recommending the bid from Overhead Door of Atlanta, the amount of $6,339. All E-Verify, safe documentation is on file.
Okay. Any discussion?
Greg, is this the kind of door that you push the button and it automatically swi, is it that?
Yes, ma'am, that's exactly the kind it is. They're automated, there will be three openers. We have two sets of double doors. There'll be a, there'll be a door in the middle where they can't get trapped. They're on a timer. Again, this company is extremely professional. They installed the doors at the Newcastle High School for this, and it should be very well professionally done.
Okay.
Greg, are we having a lot of physicians referring their patients to their for rehab kind of thing for two and three months?
Well, we do have, we have several, you know, of course, this is a senior aquatic center, so it's open for people that's 15 and over. But we do have several people that have, we allow people to have prescriptions to come in, and if there's a timeframe on that, they can come in and do their rehab work. Of course, you know, they pay the same amount as anybody else would. But yes, we have several people that do that.
This will be really helpful for them, as well as some of our seniors.
That's correct. You know, of course, and, you know, we do have people that have, you know, that are in wheelchairs. And again, you know, in doing this, we have, we have an attendant, but we asked an awful lot of that attendant, and there are times when people have been, have been left waiting outside to get in.
Are we at capacity, just about?
Well, we have, several of our classes, the Zumba class especially, will have 45 and 50 people in that. And so, you know, for those classes, you know, we can't hold, we can't have many more. But, you know, we, as far as, you know, when we have open swim and stuff like that, you know, depending on what time of the day it is, you know, of the morning, it's well-used. Late in the afternoon, you know, there are, there are times when, you know, when it is available where people, it's not as, it's less crowded.
It's been a huge success, though, hasn't it?
It has been extremely successful.
I hear, I hear Mr. Grove of the American Council. Thank you, Greg.
All right. Any other questions for Greg on this item? If not, chair will entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Chief Carter, you've got the next item, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I bring before you now the budgeted purchase request. It's going to be for a mobile unit that provides graded breathing air along with auxiliary lighting and power for emergency operations. This particular piece of equipment is utilized for incidents of a long duration. A good example would be the recent Port Street incident where we were on the scene for well over eight hours. Currently, we carry breathing air on our apparatus, but it's limited supply. So, several times during an operation, we actually have to stop, take firefighters, send them back to the stations to fill our bottles up, and then, of course, transport them back to the scene. Several issues. And this has been in our long-range planning. This will enhance the safety of our firefighters and our community. It's also something we can utilize at the training facility. The budget reflects an $82,000, that's what we have budgeted for this particular project. We did receive three bids. A low bid is a Liberty One system from MES, $75,628, which is going to be $6,372 below our budgeted amount. All E-Verify documentation is on file, warranties are intact, and with respect for the request, we recommend approval.
Any discussion or feel free to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve, Mayor.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, chief. Sidney, come on up here.
Sidney Forsyth, Carter's Water Department. The water pollution control plant currently uses three small 15-horsepower pumps and an eight-inch line to move sludge through the plants. Important system that kind of limits our capacity right now. We have a larger pump in place, 120 horsepower pump, but we need a larger line. Water Department took bids for, to replace the eight-inch line with a 24-inch line, which we think will be sufficient capacity for us for some time there. I recommend the low bid at Ferguson Water Works for $63,087. To be paid our capacity fees, E-Verify, safe documentation is on file.
Okay. Any discussion?
And just to clarify, capacity fees are separate from what we pay monthly when we pay our water and sewer bills?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay. Other question or any further discussion? If not, chair will entertain a motion.
And make a motion to approve the low bidder of Ferguson Water Works?
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And we'll conclude this evening with our monthly financial report. Hello, Tom.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Looking at the March 2011 agreement to March 2010. Excuse me. In the general fund, revenues have decreased from last year's level by $81,000. While expenses have increased by $831,000, this is due mainly to increased personal expenses. On contrary, it is retirement contributions that did increase in operating expenses. Three areas of revenue that I look at on a monthly basis are the local office sales tax. tax, we've got an increase over last year of $111,000. Police funds and toll furloughers have also increased by $71,000, and billing permits and inspection fees have decreased by $19,000. Water and Sewer Fund revenues have decreased over last year by $562,000. This is mainly largely, due largely to the decrease in capacity fees and coupled with the lower water sales. Expenses have decreased by $144,000, this is mostly due to lower capital expenses and lower debt service cost. In the gas fund, revenues have decreased from March of last year by $2.2 million. This is due to less gas being consumed, while expenses have decreased by $589,000. This is due mostly to the lower cost of purchased gas. In the electric fund, revenues have decreased by $384,000, while expenses have increased by $1.03 million, due largely to the cost of electricity being purchased for resale and also increase in capital expenses. In the store water fund, revenues have decreased from March of last year by $19,000, while expenses have increased by $460,000. If you remember, we're doing some major capital expenditures in this area. Solid Waste Fund, revenues have decreased over last year by $16,000, and expenses have decreased also by $23,000. This is due to decrease in operating expenses and capital expenses. And finally, the Fiber Optics Fund, excuse me, revenues have increased by $263,000. This is again due to the miscellaneous revenues from Kentucky Data Link. Expenses have decreased by $13,000, this is due mainly to lower statewide telecom payments and lower capital expenses. That is my report.
Okay. Questions for Tom? Thank you, sir. Any other business that needs to come before council this evening?
Yes, Mayor and Council, as you probably know, the pool's out tomorrow, so that means our pools will be opening on Saturday. The Auburn Street Pool and the Delengel Park Pool will be opening at 12:00 noon beginning Saturday. We've got a wonderful lifeguard staff and done a lot of rehab to our pools, and we've got some big crowds out, so tell everybody to come out.
Okay. And I think we've had a bit of history tonight at this council meeting. Mr. Archer, you haven't said a word on meeting.
I actually have, I'm just whispering and saying.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
You can get a rump out of you.